I would like to call to order the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado. For July sixth, two thousand and twenty. We will start our meeting as we do most of our meetings with citizen comment. On any agenda items if there's any citizens out there who would like to make a comment or speak on any. Items that are on the agenda. You may do so now. There's a three minute time limit for your presentation. Please confine your remarks to the agenda item. And if you would like to speak, please use the raise your hand in the zoom format. Or ask to speak on the phone and I will recognize you and you may go ahead when. When you are recognized to speak, if you would please give us your first name and your last name, and if you would spell your last name. And to give us an address and then you'll have three minutes to speak and our. Mayor Pro Tem will be timing. So do we have anyone? Anyone in the zoom format with their hands raised, Ms. Check?
No, Mayor, no, no raised hands.
Okay, is there anyone from the public on the telephone who would like to speak under citizens comment? If you would like to speak under citizens comment, please ask to speak and I'll recognize you. Is there anyone? I don't see anyone asking to speak. I'll go one more time. Is there anyone wishing to speak on citizens right to speak? You may do so now. If you would please ask to speak, I'll recognize you. Okay, I don't hear anyone that desires to speak on citizens comment on agenda items. So if the members of the public would. Mute your phones now so they don't get any background information. We will continue with our meeting. Our first order of business is outside agency committee recommendations. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We do, and we have a couple of committee members here this evening also. I think yep, there's Mary Ann, Mary Ann Schilling, our assistant city manager. Heads up this committee and and so I'll let her introduce it.
All right, Ms. Schilling, take it away.
Hi, good evening. I just have a short introduction. Tonight you're going to be joined by Cheryl Brungard and Christine Disney. They're both members of the outside agency committee. Tonight we are going to have a presentation from them and then they will both be available for questions following. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Cheryl and Christine.
Okay, Cheryl and Christine.
Christine, did you have a statement? You're reading.
I don't I see Christine on the screen right now. You may have. She was here earlier. We may have lost her.
Okay, well, we had a statement to read. We. I'll just go ahead till so we're not wasting your time. We met four times. We heard presentations from twenty five different groups who came to us to ask for. Funds for outside projects that they have from the city of Wheat Ridge. And you should have a report that Mary Ann sent that breaks down the different groups. It's by alphabet and. They were asking for different amounts. We had four. That were funded that we did not fund previously or that we did not fund last year. So on your sheet, it's those showing red. On the breakout. And we had. Seven members of our. Committee and we, like I said, we met four times and we had. Someone from a foundation, our our membership is someone from a foundation, someone, a couple of small business owners. Different people from the community. We have somebody going to school for public policy. So lots of different. Experiences that brought. We all brought to the table and we wanted to thank Mary Ann. She kept us on track and on time and really got us organized. So we appreciate that. And so. With that, you should have the. Sheet and you can see a lot of these on the sheet that you've got there or the information, a lot of them were affected by COVID nineteen. Lot of them were going to do fundraising and those have been canceled. And what we tried to look at was. Which ones have an impact for human, for human beings, for feeding people, for mental health, for housing people. Meeting basic needs. And so those were the areas that we really looked at. And then a lot of the future. Our STEM students, our students at Outdoor Lab and of course, our seniors. So we started with. Requests for a hundred and eighty six thousand. From our different agencies and we ended up getting the number down to a hundred and thirty three eight, which is the same amount that we. Council gave last year for the outside agencies. We were able to do that because one of our agencies. Senior Resource Center revised their application once they.
Cheryl.
There you are.
I'm back. I'm sorry. Would you like me to start from the beginning?
If you want, I was trying to recap it, but you can.
I lost internet. I'm very sorry. Let me start.
She's got something we prepared that sounds less crazy than mine, so.
On behalf of the outside agency committee, Cheryl, who is a true warrior. And I would like to thank council for giving us the opportunity to present our recommendations for the outside agency awards for the two thousand and twenty one budget. The committee comprised of myself, Cheryl Brungard, Sunny Garcia, Chris Schilling, Alejandro Mejor. Genevieve Wooden and Jerry DeTulio began meeting in May to hear presentations from the agencies listed before you. The majority of the committee members were on the committee last year and we knew what to expect. But we're not prepared for what we heard. The implications of the coronavirus were obvious. Agency after agency reported downturns in funding, cancellations of major. And sometimes their only fundraising event and ever increasing numbers of people seeking their services. One agency completely changed the type of surfaces they offered. Specifically because of what they discovered about what their constituents really needed. Just two weeks after the quarantine lockdown began. The worry and concern about where to find funding was palpable. Each and every one of these organizations offers much needed services to the Wheat Ridge community. Our task was formidable. How do we equitably award monies from a set amount? To agencies whose ask was significantly more than what we could provide. Safety, basic needs such as food, mental health care, clean air, affordable housing. STEM programs and community health or a few of the areas covered by the twenty five applicant groups. Since these funds are for two thousand and twenty one, we were looking to the future while keeping the impact of COVID nineteen in the forefront. Like most of us, many of these agencies are living the COVID nineteen story as we speak. None of us knows how two thousand and twenty one will look. So these two thousand and twenty one grant funds can make a huge difference. The committee members read over each request and look for three things. Do these Wheat Ridge funds go to programs that directly or indirectly impact Wheat Ridge residents' lives? Do they have documentation of the number or percentage of Wheat Ridge residents served? I'd like you to say that fast three times. And lastly, does it improve quality of life for our residents? Our committee was well staffed to look at these questions. I am a former grant writer for the Boys and Girls Clubs of Metro Denver. Cheryl Brungard has volunteered and worked for a number of Jeffco nonprofits. Alejandro is a program officer for a major foundation. Sunny is pursuing a degree in public policy. Chris is a small business owner. Jerry is the former mayor of Wheat Ridge and the Jeffco. Treasurer and Genevieve has served on the Wheat Ridge City Council for eight years. In the end, while we wish we had more with which to work. We are confident of these recommendations. It should be noted, it was not within the scope of this committee. To assist these agencies with applying for the CARES Act funding. And we are not privy to their efforts to secure funding from the source. We would like to thank Mary Ann for her outstanding organizational and facilitational skills. And again, thank counsel for considering our recommendations. It should be noted, the amount we are recommending for two thousand and twenty one is the same amount we recommended for two thousand and twenty. We will now take any questions you may have.
Well, thank you, Ms. Disney, and I want to thank you and Ms. Brungard and the other members of the committee and Ms. Schilling for. Putting this report together and doing the due diligence required to. Provide this report. So thank you very much. And we'll open it from questions of council. Does anyone have a question or comment for? The committee. Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Christine and Cheryl and all of the people who put work into this. Having applied for the funds in the past. I know that it's a lot of work and a lot of time. So thank you. I'm just curious, is the amount that you guys came up with a number that you determined or does the city set a budget that's a target for the the committee to meet?
The city. Set the budget for us.
Okay, great. Well, I think everything looks great and I'm glad we're able to contribute to so many great organizations for serving our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Ms. Hoppy.
First, I just want to say thank you to the committee for spending the long amount of time that they did and having to. Adapt and do it on Zoom and I appreciate your recommendations. And I am really thankful that as a city, we have this opportunity for citizens to be able for nonprofits. That help our citizens directly to be able to request these funds. One question last year that I had is. In the application process. Did you guys ask how much of their budget is this request? You know, do they, do they do other fundraising? Do they have other requests from other? Areas where they could get funding? And so I'm just wondering if that was implemented this year in the application process.
We don't ask that question. And the reason why. Some of these agencies come to us with a specific project, for instance. The Library Foundation, the money is going to purchase. A or pay for. Sign language services. So they had a set amount. Other times, the amount is determined by the number of people that use their services. And the other amount is determined by a percentage of the budget. We don't have the capability to audit their budget. But we do ask everybody and they do tell us what the money is going to go for and. How many people? We serve. They serve in Wheat Ridge. Cheryl, do you have anything to back that up?
I think for bigger agencies, it would be very hard for the like the active, the ATT. ATAT, whatever that one, however they say ADAT, that one. We cover a lot more of their budget because they're smaller. Somebody like Family Tree or. Senior Resource Center would be really hard to determine the the amount of funding that we give. Percentage wise, they'd have to to come up with that. That's not something that we would. That we're determining, so I don't know.
I think almost all of these agencies get funding from multiple sources. We're only a part of the pie.
But. That was part of that. It's kind of the the reason for my question because last year it was. Do we know if? You know, like if the. Is this, you know, feed the future? Are we their only funder?
Jewish family services.
Family Tree. Yeah, not, not them specifically. I'm just saying an example.
Jefferson Center for Mental Health. Those are all bigger agencies that get.
Yeah. I I just was asking because I just wanted to know if they're also looking in other places if, you know, for funding and if were there. The only place that they're going to. So that that was just kind of my question and the reason why I asked that also last year.
Thank you. We may have had a. A little technical difficulty with Miss Chris, Miss Disney's. Audio. Additional questions from council? Mr. Urban.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to say thank you to the committee for your time and effort put into this and really appreciate all your efforts and. One question for Patrick as it relates to the CARES Act. Can any of the funds that are being used for this purpose be reimbursed through the CARES Act? Or is there an additional pot of money we can make available to nonprofits? Or COVID related expenses?
This for this program, since these are funds for the two thousand and twenty one budget cycle. They are not eligible for CARES Act reimbursement. The CARES Act dollars that we've received right now from Jefferson County have to be spent by the end of this year. So we could look at another program for nonprofits or or local agencies in the city. To use CARES Act funding as long as that money is spent this year. These funds for next year's budget.
I guess one question for the committee members, maybe Cheryl might be able to answer this. In their presentations or communications with the nonprofits, do they indicate that they had specific COVID related expenses or? I understand their their difficulty in fundraising during this time, but were there any COVID related expenses that they incurred?
Jeffco Action mentioned it. They've got way more clients than they normally have. Our community table food bank also. And we did mention Jerry would bring it up at every presentation that applied. Some of these are not. We're not eligible to do the county money for whatever reason, the additional funds. But we did mention it because that deadline was coming up during our presentation. Wasn't it the twenty fifth of June, I believe, was the the last. Round of money that was available from the county and we made sure that we let them know that that if we couldn't. Help them, are they also helping themselves by applying for those additional Jeffco funds? So and a couple of them didn't know about it and several of them said they were already in the planning stages, so. And they were understood. We understood that that had to be spent by two thousand and twenty. So we did not. You know, there wasn't anything we could do about that money. This is for next year that we were looking at, so. But we did mention it to every one of them. Are they aware of the other funds that are available?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to everybody who was on the committee. I think you guys did a great job and we appreciate your recommendations. My question is to Patrick as well. Are we expecting the budget to look? Do we have an idea about how the budget looks? And what that's going to look like for two thousand and twenty one as far as paying for all this stuff?
Yeah, the good question, Mr. Stites and and you know, we decided to go ahead and move forward with this process because this is the timeframe that we do it. You know, it's 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 a little still a little too early to determine what our year end revenues are going to look like. Fortunately, I don't. I don't have the final final numbers, but I got a hint of of May's of June's revenues, which are May's retail sales and. And surprisingly good. So I want to dig into them a little bit to make sure that we're not missing something, but. If that continues, I think we'll be fine. But if we have another blip or another spike in COVID and we have to shut businesses down again. You know, we'll have another hit with revenues, but so we're hoping that this will just be one one other. Budget to ask city council to consider when we're balancing our budget. And I'm hoping it could. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? Well, I don't see any more questions. I want to thank you again, Ms. Disney and Ms. Brungard and Ms. Schilling for. You and your members of the committee for bringing this forward. It looks like a solid group of people that do great work in our in our community and I'm. I'm really happy that we're able to. To fund these at at this time because I think it's it's good to get this money out. Ms. Nusselbeck, did you have a?
Sorry, I just, I just was getting a text message from Christine Disney saying that she was still muted. She was trying to get on.
Okay.
This is Ally.
I'm on now. Okay, I think I'm on. Yeah, thank you.
We've got you in audio. So we're just kind of concluding. Thank you very much, Ms. Disney, for for bringing this forward. Patrick, this will come to council. For approval or is this part of our, have we already appropriated these funds?
Now, this will come as part of the budget process. So we present the two thousand and twenty one budget. It'll be included in that as an approval.
Okay. Great. All right. Well, if there's no more, if no more comment, thanks again for bringing this forward and we look forward to. Having this in our budget cycle and for being able to distribute these to the to the recipients. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Okay, we will go to item number two on our agenda and this is a review of our strategic plan and department accomplishments and work plans. You know, looking at this, it would look like that we've sort of accomplished everything we might for the next two years, but I'm sure that's a. There's a lot of work still to do. So, Mr. Goff, do you have some reports on this?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start off and we do have all our department directors here and and some other staff it looks like to help. Give an update on our strategic plan. First of all, let me pull it up here so we can all look at it, but we we really started since I've been with the city back in two thousand and eight is when we really started. A relatively consistent. Strategic planning process. We've used numerous facilitators over that time. But today's vision statement that we'll go over here in a second really was first drafted back in two thousand and eight and it's it's been amended. And wordsmith and tweaked ever since by all the councils since then and but it's kind of stayed, the basis kind of stayed the same, but we definitely changed some wording in that. But in two thousand and seventeen with our most recent facilitator, Heather Bergman. That's where we really created the current format that you see and structure of our strategic plan again, which we'll go over this evening. And let me pull that up here. So we can. Run through it. Maybe. There it is. Okay. Share my screen. Is that it? Yeah, okay. Everybody see that?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is just the cover page of our current strategic plan and as I mentioned. We have a a vision statement and I'll just read that real quick for the viewers out there. Our two thousand and thirty five vision is Wheat Ridge is an attractive and inviting city and community for family. Wheat Ridge has great neighborhoods, is a hub of commerce with a choice of economically viable commercial areas. And has diverse transportation. Wheat Ridge is committed to environmental stewardship and its residents enjoy an active, healthy lifestyle and are proud of their hometown. So that's the the vision statement that our strategic plan is based off and within that vision statement are eight vision topics. Which I I ran through it in your. Oh, great. Is this not show up? There we go. A little slow. Missing a couple pages here. Okay, well, let me let me back up to the memo. Well, I'm struggling with that. So the the vision statement includes eight vision topics. And within those vision topics, city council in two thousand and seventeen identified twenty five different goals. And forty seven different strategic priorities. And those are the current ones we're working on. In two thousand and eighteen, I came back to city council, the council that was seated at that time. And asked them to prioritize those forty seven strategic priorities. And to let let staff know which ones are the top priorities to work on for the next year or two. We'd still work on all priorities, but we needed some direction from council on what what the top priorities were. And we did a little voting session on that and prioritization and we came up with five that received. Majority support and those you'll see. On your strategic plan, which if you have. Open there. Ally, you know what I'm doing wrong here?
I don't know what's going on.
I know. Give me one second because we're going to need this.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Let me close this. That's that's why I lost a connection to the city's network. Okay. So does anybody else have, Ally, do you happen to have it up? You can pull, you share your screen.
I will get it up in one second.
We can, we can make adjustments on the fly here.
Yes.
We've all gotten so good at Zoom now. We could, any of us could share our screens.
I know.
City manager, are you looking for the?
This is the packet item. Do you have your council packet item that you can pull up? Item number two?
Yep.
Or from the city's admin drive?
Yep. Which attach? Well, I'll get all of them open. The memo?
That, yeah, you can start there.
Hang on. You know what? I've got the strategic plan open. Is that good?
Yep.
Okay.
There we go. Perfect.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, staff. Thank you.
Okay, so again, there's there's the vision statement that I read and up in your right hand corner of that, that's the top five strategies that city council came up with. In two thousand and eighteen and and those were updating the neighborhood revitalization strategy. Developing an I seventy Kipling corridor strategy to address crime aesthetics. And redevelopment opportunities, finalize the design of the thirty eighth Avenue streetscape. Work with Colorado Department of Transportation to prioritize I seventy Kipling improvements and set a policy on shared housing. So those five priorities are within those forty seven total priorities and we're going to go through each of those. One at a time here and staff will give you a very quick update just so that this is a. Really new council and even the council members who've been on here for a couple of years. I think we haven't really spent a lot of time reviewing this, so this will be, I think, a good education for everybody. We'll go through it fairly quickly just so you give you an idea of what's in the current plan. So we'll start with the first. And then, yeah, let's go through all that. Ally, you can keep going. Go to the first vision topic. There we go. So this is the first vision topic. Wheat Ridge is an attractive and inviting city. And you can see we have it, I think we have five goals here and several strategies. And we'll run through all these strategies under this vision topic and then we'll take questions. So the first one is strategy one, and this is in Karen O'Donnell's area. So I'll let her give an update on this.
Okay.
There. So the first strategy is in reference to visual art in the city. And as you can see in the update, the cultural commission is going strong. They are led by our recreation manager, Susan Anderson, as the staff liaison. And they developed a cultural vision for the city, which was adopted by council in April of 2018. We do need to review and update the public art plan that was adopted in 2009. But there are two, there were two public art installations in the last few years anchored in place was installed at the Ward Station in 2018 and Sweetgrass Dance was just last year in 2019 at Anderson Park. And we're working on developing a tour of the, of Denver street art. Unfortunately, we had to postpone that with COVID, but I think we can probably get something set up here pretty soon. And we're currently working on getting a consultant on board to begin the public art discussions related to the I-70 Hook Ramp, Wadsworth and Ward TOD projects.
Great. Thanks, Karen. So as you can see in the, in this chart, the green shows that this is an ongoing project. And that was under goal number one, develop a visual art presence in the city. Goal number two is to ensure that the city has attractive and inviting open space and parks. And again, Karen has two strategies under here.
So the first one is renovating Prospect Park. So phase one construction was complete in 2019 and that included a new football and soccer field, baseball softball field, irrigation, trail landscaping and drainage improvement. And I actually have a little bit of a mistake in the narrative for phase two. So we're going to begin phase two in 2020 with the demolition and construction of the new pavilion. But also in phase two, which is not in here, there was the entry drive and north parking lot, which involved asphalt, concrete and signage, pickleball courts, a fishing area, reconfiguration of the south parking area and just some landscape and irrigation. And in addition to the phase three that is listed in here, which is the Burbert House and new restroom at the north end of the park, these items are currently not funded. And some resources for phase two were diverted to complete Anderson Park.
Great. Thanks, Karen. And the next item is Karen's.
And that's strategy two is renovate Anderson Park. So hopefully you're all aware that those renovations were completed in 2019 as part of the four investing for the future program projects. And we're funded by temporary sales and use tax increase, the Jeffco Open Space Funds and Conservation Trust Funds. This included improvements to the building, outdoor pool and locker rooms, baseball fields, multi-use fields, access to the Clear Creek, new performance pavilion, which I'll note will be utilized for performances in the park this summer, starting this Wednesday. So hopefully you all get signed up because we do have capacity limitations. So that's my little side note. Also upgrades to the trails, irrigation and landscaping. And the total budget for that Anderson project was approximately seven million.
Great. Thank you, Karen. Moving on to goal number three under this vision topic is underground utility lines and commercial corridors to improve streetscapes. And this is a public works community development project. And Ken, I believe is on, can give an update on this?
Yeah, thanks, Patrick. I think over the years, we've been able to be pretty strategic in, in how we've leveraged those Excel funds to kind of coordinate the undergrounding of utilities with other public or, or public-private investments. So an example going back a few years would be the undergrounding of the lines at Discovery Park when the city made that investment. And then more recently, we've undergrouded lines at 38th and Kipling as part of the Circle K. And, and that development on those two corners. And then most recently, at the Applewood Shopping Center, coincident with that developer making some major investments with some urban renewal funds as well to re-tenant the Walmart space and upgrade the streetscape as well as the, the parking lots. So it's, it's really been kind of public-private partnerships. And we've had urban renewal participation as well. So we have borrowed into the, the 2020 funds. So we, we need to refill that pot of money, but we'll continue to look for kind of strategic ways to make those public infrastructure investments and aesthetic improvements coincident with other investments, both public and private.
Great. Thanks, Ken. And just as a follow-up on that, I mean, I think it's in here in the, in the notes, but this, we get about 300,000 a year in credits from Excel. So these aren't general fund dollars that we're using. And as Ken mentioned, Excel lets us borrow ahead three years. So we can do a project that's, you know, over a million dollars. And most of these projects are over a million dollars. It's fairly expensive to underground utility lines. I don't know if you remember, Ken, Applewood Shopping Center was definitely over, I think it was 1.2 million, if I remember, to underground all those lines. So. Ally, can you move on? Yeah, thanks. Goal number four under this vision topic is expand proactive code enforcement. I believe we have our chief and, and division chief Lorenz on.
That's right. Good evening, Patrick. Good evening, Mayor and council. With respect to that particular strategy, I believe the conversation started in 2017, 2018 in the council. The council wanted us to look at promoting more strict, stringent standards in the community around items such as permitted maximum height of grass, trash containers, disorderly house, fence and wall maintenance and items of those sort. In conjunction with Mr. Dahl, I think we looked at surrounding jurisdictions and looked at what their enforcement regulations were to see if we were above or behind them as far as aggressive enforcement. And we brought some of those back to council with some suggestions on, on what other jurisdictions were doing. A few of those were, were acted on. Generally, there wasn't a, a real clear direction on, on some of those issues. So they, they remained as they were. But that, that was the, obviously the, under the former council and many of the council members who were on that probably remember that discussion. I certainly wasn't here for that. As far as proactive code enforcement, obviously since COVID has hit, we haven't been very proactive. We've been trying to keep our people safe and keep citizens safe. So most of what we're doing is by mail, over phone. We do site visits, but we don't contact people in person. So we haven't been very proactive in 2020. We're looking forward to getting past COVID and moving to that. But right now, we, we've got what, what little code was revamped and we've, we've been aggressive up to this year, I think, in code enforcement and enforcing those codes and improving the process. But right now, we're sort of in, in sort of that malaise in between. I don't know if Division Chief Lorenz has anything after that. Hey, that sums it up very well.
Great. Thank you, chief. Ally, I think you, you, you're sharing an email. Thank you. And then our last item under this vision topic, city council came up with, with quite a few different strategies, as I mentioned. And some just didn't really fit under a specific goal. And we kind of had to force them even under a specific, specific vision topic, but we didn't want to lose track of them. And this is one of them, updating the sign code. And I'll let Ken speak to that.
Thanks again, Patrick. Yeah, so this has been accomplished. We, city council adopted a comprehensive update to the city sign code in chapter 26 in 2019. And that was driven in large part by Supreme Court ruling that required that all local sign code regulations be content neutral, which was an interesting puzzle to solve because sign codes inherently over time have been the exact opposite of content neutral. But we, we pulled that up off with the help of our city attorney's office and seized a couple other opportunities while we were at it. I think at council's direction, we, we really simplified and clarified our temporary sign regulations, which pertains at least in, in no small part to political signs. So that, that was a good update that, that was clarifying. And also, I think, very permissive for people to express their, their political opinions, particularly during campaign season. And then we also, at council's direction, had an opportunity to update our LED changeable copy sign regulations. We'd had some LED signs that had seemed excessively bright. And we were able to make a retroactive provision in the sign code that requires that all LED changeable copy signs have technology in them that requires them to reduce their level of illumination when there's less ambient light. So in, in the evenings and, and overnight hours, they can add that technology.
Great. Thanks, Ken. So that's all the goals and strategic priorities for this vision topic. Is there any questions before we move on to vision topic two?
I have a quick question, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Hoppe.
Please, Ms. Hoppe.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I, my question is under strategy four, which is the expand proactive code enforcement. And I just, when reading through this, I gave, I had written a, a note for myself. It's, I, I imagine this will always kind of be an ongoing, which is why they're all green and there's not necessarily a blue block thing done here. But I'm just wondering if there is a need for, for more direction on specific topics, or I know a lot of things were kind of picked out and, and brought to council. And, and we kind of, you know, went down the list and gave some direction on some stuff. But I'm just wondering if there's a need for more direction? Or if the department feels like they have enough direction, it just happens to be an item that will be an ever-evolving, ongoing item?
I'll, I'll jump in there maybe and let the chief or Jim speak to that. But, you know, we, we, we've, this, we brought this back numerous times over with different councils. And honestly, every time we bring it back, we don't get much direction. There, there's kind of a reluctance to, to change the code that much. And as the chief mentioned, this last go-around, when I think in 2018 or when we brought it back, we had numerous suggestions, and I think only one or two of them were, were approved. So at, i- if council's really serious about it, I'd, I'd rather not waste our time and spend on it if, if we're not going to take it seriously. But I'll let the chief, maybe in Jim, if they have any comments on that also.
Your, your microphone is mute if you're trying to talk. There you go.
Yeah. Sorry about that. The, the reason that it's an ongoing issue, I think you, you hit the nail right on the head, Ms. Hoppe, that we'll never, we'll never be done with code enforcement. So that's, it, it wasn't so much about whether stricter or more proactive code enforcement, but it was whether it be ongoing proactive and code enforcement would continue. Obviously it will. And again, I, I echo Patrick's sentiments that, you know, if, if council wants to do something, we'll certainly enforce it. But when, I think when we bring examples up that, that people haven't thought about, then it, it makes them back off of what their desired intention is. And we end up back at the same place. But I'll let Division Chief Lorenz speak to that real quick. You know, I, I think what we found was that we were pretty consistent with all of the municipalities, you know, in an average kind of way. Some were a little stricter in, you know, for example, height of, of weeds. And I think we were, we're comfortable at where we are, you know, from, from the police department's perspective. We, I, I think we're doing a pretty good job. I think we, we want to try to get out and be more proactive. But as far as the ordinances themselves, I, I, I think we're, we're right where we probably should be.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. It looks like we've got questions on that answered.
Any other questions on vision topic one? Otherwise, we'll move to the vision top. We'll take questions at the end too, if something comes up. Vision, vision topic two is Wheat Ridge is a community for families. And our first goal on that was to improve the quality of Wheat Ridge Public Schools. We, city council gave this to a committee that was formed a while back, the Wheat Ridge Education Alliance. And they did quite a bit to help promote our, our local Wheat Ridge schools. And, but that, that hasn't moved forward since then. If this is a priority, the city council wants us to continue moving forward, we can. It was, it was headed up by a former council member, Genevieve Wooden, who's no longer on council. So once she was off, it, it hasn't gone anywhere. So that's where that is right now. I don't, Leah, did you want to say anything? I know Leah was very interested in this topic. You know, if she's got any comments on that?
Yeah. So I had reached out to several educators in the area to kind of reinvigorate that group. And I think because of the bad taste that was left in the community's mouth from Plan B, a lot of members didn't feel like it was beneficial at that point in time. And some of the leaders in the community also thought that it was kind of a farce and that it was needing for the sake of meeting as opposed to taking any actionable items. So I definitely think that this, an, an education group of some sort would be beneficial for our community. I've, I've heard from many organizations, not only PTAs, but schools themselves and parents about wanting to have our school communities collaborate and connect with each other in whatever way possible. So I think the interest is out there and we have some new principals in the area that I think would be beneficial to reach out to. We have a new principal going into Everett, Josh Cooley's, since started at Wheat Ridge High School after the educational alliance kind of fizzled. So I definitely think that there's room for us to kind of look at something or replacing the educational alliance. And some ideas have been thrown around, but I think, I think it's really just kind of in the early phases at this point in time.
Great. Thanks, Leah. Our second goal is provide options for seniors to age in place. I think there's a typo there. And the first strategy is, Ally's?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My apologies for the email faux pas. No excuses. Yeah. So I talked to some of the folks that were formerly Mary Ann's role to get up to speed on this. And from everyone's recollection, this, back in 2018, there was a, and, and prior, there was a team that met of staff, businesses and residents to work on this. And they actually collaborated with Jewish Family Service on a naturally occurring retirement community NORC initiative. And this group met and it really focused on a sort of a holistic approach to seniors aging in place by looking at health, mental health, isolation. And this work was ultimately assumed by the, the Jewish Family Service. The group ended up migrating over to the Seniors Resource Center. And then in 2018, then the grant was no longer funded. The grant that funded that piece of it came to an end. And then Mary Ann is on and Mary Ann updated the Boomer Bond survey through with Dr. Cog to the Boomer Bond assessment for the city of Wheat Ridge. And that was most recently, I think that report came out in January of this year. So at this point, there's no further work happening on this initiative.
Thank you, Ally. And then the next goal, develop a plan to initiate the senior crime prevention program. That's our police department.
Good evening again. On this strategy point, the department was hoping to add staffing to this particular, to our crime prevention officer. We have one on staff. We were looking to add a second crime prevention officer, obviously. When the COVID hit, we put that on hold and that's been on hold. Our one crime prevention officer, Officer Bowman, has been doing, doing great work, but he's spread very thin in this area. So as people request crime prevention training, we, we offer it when, when we're available. We've reallocated staff where we can to try and fill that gap. And we'll be looking to hopefully get past the COVID and see what the budget looks like as far as adding additional staff down the road. But we are meeting the minimum there when we're getting requests and we're able to, to do that fairly successfully. Obviously, the senior community is not looking for interaction very often in this environment. So we haven't had much to do with respect to this plan.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. The next strategy is resolve the status of accessory dwelling units. Ken?
Yes. So accessory dwelling units have certainly been on our radar for a number of years. Accessory dwelling units are not currently allowed in the city. Uh, accessory dwelling units are not currently allowed in the city. Um, and not to delve too deep, because I know that's not the point of uh tonight. But you know, essentially, a smaller uh secondary residential unit that would be typically allowed on a single-family lot in various um kind of shapes and forms. You know, it could be a a basement unit or something on top of a garage or or even just a standalone accessory unit that you might have in your backyard. So those currently aren't allowed in the city, but we've uh, we certainly have um inquiries about those. A number of communities, um, in fact, probably most communities along the front range allow allow them in some form or fashion. Um, and we've surveyed our residents about them in the citizen survey. We also had a public outreach event that included two citywide public workshops in the spring of uh or late winter of twenty sixteen. Uh, got fairly good participation. Um, city council at that time was briefed, I think in July or June of of twenty sixteen and elected not to move forward with an ordinance. Um, most recently, it was a topic of conversation during the twenty nineteen update to the neighborhood revitalization strategy. And the recommendation in that report at the end of the day was to put that on hold for a year or two. Uh, the thinking behind that being that they just didn't think there was that much demand for them. Uh, and the 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 amount of work that it would take to get um, you know, through a public process that would get to some sort of an ordinance that would allow those uh in some fashion, uh, didn't seem like it was worth the effort, given the the limited amount of people that are probably interested in doing those. So that's, that's really uh kind of where we're at. It's noted in the uh, the status that we had intended to include additional questions in the uh twenty twenty resident survey. But that uh has been put on hold for this year, as council is aware. So uh, that's where we're at. Um, we aren't currently doing work on that. But um, at your direction, we certainly can.
Thank you, Ken. Uh, goal three is to uh support residents in taking an active role in community policing. Turn it back to our police department.
Yes, uh assisting residents in setting up neighborhood watch program was the specific strategy. Um, in that strategy was their, our our neighborhood watch program, our dog walker watch program and refuse to be a a victim, or three of our more popular programs there. I asked our uh, I asked our folks to go back and look at our neighborhood watch programs, because that number twenty-three seemed really uh, really high for uh the the size of the community. That's the number of commu- of neighborhood watches that we've had signed up through the last few years. However, we really only have four active neighborhood watch programs. Generally, what tends to happen is people sign up, they put the signs up in their neighborhood, they have a very enthusiastic leader. Uh, but if that leader tends to drop off or enthusiasm wanes, it's difficult because that has to be maintained. That's a program that really has to be maintained by the citizens or homeowners in that area. It's it's difficult for us to be spread across that. So we have four of those uh programs that are currently uh going. We haven't been able to do much in the in the COVID environment to expand that. Um, I was talking to Sergeant Dawkins, she'll be working to try and reengage the community with that. Our dog walker watch program is extremely successful. We do really well with that. Um, I was about to go down and meet all the folks just before COVID. But again, we uh, we had to put that on hold and our refuse to be a victim. Um, obviously, that's an in in-person meeting generally, so we've had to, we've had to put that on hold as well. But those will, we'll right back up as soon as we uh, as soon as we get past COVID and and uh, if we ever do add a second person, obviously, we'll be able to do more of those uh interventions.
Thank you, Chief. Ally, um, looks like our last um strategy under, under this vision topic against the police department, uh further develop and expand community-wide crime prevention program.
Yep, I'm gonna have Division Chief Lorenz discuss that one.
Are we up?
Yep.
You ready? Um, again, developing and expanding crime prevention programs, we're really limited by staff. We, we are doing what we can with one and, you know, our our hopes and expectations. Were to uh add another one in twenty twenty, and it just doesn't look, look possible. And our our ability to have meetings and run the kinds of classes that we have done in the past is limited. So I think we sound like a broken record with the uh, the excuse of COVID keeps repeating here. Um, we just don't have the the ability to put these classes on right now. But um, Officer Bowman is still available to handle crime prevention. He just does it in a different way. Uh, he does most of his work by phone or uh going out and doing site plans uh and then making a report and and giving it to property owners. So it's just a little bit different right now and and we are limited. I would, I would also add that uh, while we're interested in developing a a a larger plan for seniors and and senior community uh crime prevention programs, um, we're still doing that. They're just in line with everybody else right now. We don't have a special um assigned uh facilitator to work specifically with with seniors and and find specific resources uh to be an expert in that area.
Your um microphone is on mute, Mr. Goff.
And it was telling me that on my screen. Thank you, uh Chief and Jim. And um, that's it for vision topic two, Wheat Ridge is a Community for Families. Any questions from council on vision topic two?
Hi, this is Rachel and I just uh got a note from Val that she had an emergency with a neighbor and had to step out. And she wanted me to let you guys know.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that uh piece of news.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Hoppy?
Yes, Ms. Hoppy.
I believe our, I I believe our um, our next page is also still uh, uh, vision topic two, and it talks about the library.
You're correct.
Right.
Yes, um, and that's mine, thank you. Um, identifying uh funding source and potential location for a library. Um, as you all know, we we do have a a library in Wheat Ridge um off of, uh, it's connected to the uh Senior Resource Center. Um, it's, it's a very small space. I think it's, I can't even remember what the square footage is. I think it's less than six thousand square feet, I believe. Um, their typical libraries now these days are are in the ten to fifteen thousand square foot range. They've been wanting um a new library in in the Wheat Ridge area for quite some time and so have, so has um previous councils and maybe this current council. Um, we've been in close contact with the library district for numerous years. We've offered um a couple of different um locations for them over the years, um such as thirty-eighth and at the thirty-eighth and Wads Development, the Coroner's Project. Um, the uh, also the uh, the Uppam, thirty-eighth and Uppam apartments. We were, um, we had some discussions with them to see if they could locate in there. Um, nothing, nothing came through with those different locations. Um, years ago, we actually looked at um forty-fourth and Wads for a new spot too. Uh, but during those times, the library district um didn't have as um, the the resources or the finances. Um, they've recently increased their mill levy a couple of years ago and they've done a new um uh, a needs assessment, I think, planned for their district. And they still are very interested in in locating a a a new library potentially in this area. I think with the new library that they just put in Edgewater, it's probably not as high as a priority for them. Um, that one um, um, I think services this area of of the county for them. But um, I think, you know, at this point, we don't have a funding source or we haven't identified a location. So that's where that's at. Thank you, Ms. Hoppy, for letting us know. Is there anything else on this one, Ally? Is that the last?
It was the last bullet.
That's the last one, I'm so sorry.
No, that was, okay. Any uh, any more questions on vision, vision topic two? Not, we'll move to vision topic three, which is Wheat Ridge has great neighborhoods. And um, the first goal is set a clear policy to achieve diverse housing options. And um, both uh City Manager's Office and Ken, Community Development, um are under this item. Update the neighborhood revitalization strategy. And um, Ken, do you want to give a, everybody knows, we we've done that. Um, uh, and uh, Jeff Hurt was at um a a recent study session and gave an update on the neighborhood outreach program. So I'm not sure if we need to go into it much fur- further than that. Um, that's pretty recent. Everybody knows where that's at. Um, the next strategy is to set a policy on shared housing, um, Airbnb, VBR, short-term rentals, um, et cetera. And uh, I'll let Ken speak to that.
Thanks, Patrick. Uh, yeah, we've gotten council a direction at a study session in late twenty nineteen and I don't have the date in front of me, but also earlier uh in twenty twenty. And we're actively working on that. Um, I received Scott Cutler with my team uh is the planner that's been uh the point person on that. And uh, I received a a comprehensive email with several attachments from him late last week. That'll be on my list of things to look at this week. But we've got a good outline of what that uh regulatory environment uh could look like, based on some really clear and specific direction from from council. Uh, our next step will really be to scrub that uh working with the city attorney's office and the other departments that would be involved in enforcing that type of a regulatory environment. So the licensing uh folks out of uh Ally's shop uh and the um PD folks who'll, you know, be tasked with some of that enforcement role. So we're actively working on that and and should be back in front of council uh certainly later this year uh with an update and the framework of an ordinance.
Thank you, Ken. Um, the next goal under this vision topic is facilitate neighbor-to-neighbor relations. Um, and the strategy is to market local works neighborhood programs. And um, this is kind of a cross-functional strategy for the whole city. And um, we regularly meet with um local works and their executive director and their staff at times to discuss their programming and and how we can work together. Um, we utilize local works quite a bit to help us with community outreach and um, it's still on here, as you can see. Uh, we were gonna, they were gonna help us with the forty-fourth avenue corridor plan, which unfortunately was was um frozen. Um, the the funding for that was frozen because of COVID. Um, so hopefully, we can bring that back soon. And um, local works does a very good job of of helping us connect with the community. And um, Ken, I don't know if you have anything else you want to add to that?
Uh, not really. I mean, I think we were act, very much um, looking forward to kind of leveraging uh their relationships out there in the business community and and the neighborhoods to, you know, be a really active part of a really grassroots kind of engagement effort on forty-fourth avenue. But as, as you mentioned, Patrick, we've put that project at least on hold for now, pending, you know, council's kind of final um, action in the next several months regarding uh COVID related, related twenty twenty budget cuts. But for now, uh, we we have a consultant hire, but they're uh, they're officially on hold and we're not pursuing that that planning effort at this time.
And then local works is also very active in in the police department's um TLC program uh where we go out and um, traffic. What's TLC again, Mr. Lawrence? Traffic, I've forgotten now.
Traffic life quality, oh, sorry.
Code.
Uh, traffic, life quality and uh, and uh, crime, crime. So the three things that are really important in these, in this city.
Yeah, and uh, so local works is a big partner in that, in the police department. And I think they just had a another dumpsters day um to clean up a neighborhood. And um, it does help bring the neighborhoods together um and get to know each other a little bit more. Next page, Ally. Um, okay, so we're on to, we're on to the next vision topic. Any, any comments on or questions on this vision topic three?
Vision topic three, any questions? All right, seeing none, let's go to vision topic four.
Well, keep moving. Wheat Ridge has a choice of economically viable commercial areas. And the first goal is to build out development sites along I seventy corridor um by twenty twenty-five. And uh, the first strategy is to work with CDOT to prioritize the I seventy Kipling improvements. Um, CDOT, I just sent you an email, I think, uh, yesterday, maybe. That's, CDOT is moving forward with an early action item on that interchange, I seventy Kipling. It's the um westbound off-ramp at Kipling. They're gonna start making improvements, I think, this next week. And um, unfortunately, there's not enough money to complete the full interchange improvements, which I think they're saying is close to seventy-five million, if I remember, it was in that, in that um email. And um, this, this project was on, um, would have been on the list um if there's that uh transportation tax, state, state sales tax would have passed a couple of years ago. But um, it it failed pretty miserably um actually. Um, so there's just not funding available um to complete that interchange. But we're working with CDOT. Um, we have a development up there, forty-fourth and Kipling um that is impacted by that interchange. So um, Ken can probably get an update on that. But that is um, that strategy. The next strategy is to develop an I seventy Kipling corridor strategy to address crime aesthetics and redevelopment opportunities. Um, Ken, do you want to start out with the um David Evans work we did?
Sure. Yeah, so back in, I think it was twenty eighteen, we, we uh contracted with David Evans, uh, an associate who's actually also the the transportation and urban design firm that uh CDOT has contracted with to do the uh, the design of the interchange improvements. Uh, we were using their urban design team, but uh, it was a good kind of symbiotic uh relationship there with, with the consultants that are, you know, kind of in the weeds, knowing what the transportation improvements look like. So we developed a a very high-level kind of vision plan for land uses uh and multimodal transportation connectivity for that area. Um, and had that as a reference point as we review, um, you know, potential land use applications uh in this area. We do have a pending land use application for the uh east side, uh north of forty-fourth. Um, on the east side of Kipling, the vacant, it's about an eleven-acre parcel. They've been going through a concept plan approval at a staff level uh for for really several years at this point. But we uh, we just happened to have a meeting with them last week to kind of discuss their most current uh iteration of plans for that area. I do think they have some um, you know, potential end users and just trying to strike a balance between uh, you know, achieving the city's urban design goals and connectivity goals for that area uh with a plan that, you know, works in the, in the marketplace.
Thanks, thanks, Ken. And under this item too, we we've brought um a couple uh different items proposed, uh ordinances to city council um over the last year. So one is a um hotel motel licensing program. Um, and it, the other one is a um, a um, what we call it, Ken, the uh
Extended stay lodging regulations?
Stay lodging. Um, so as you know, this, this corridor obviously is um where all of our hotels are, motels. And um, we have some issues with some of them. Um, and those two items, um, I'll let the police department start with the um, were they working on the hotel motel licensing program, correct, Jim?
Yeah, um, I'll just speak for Jim and say, yeah, that's, that's still something we're, we're, we're working through on the licensing program. But um, that quarter obviously is uh ongoing concerns and issues. Um, before I turn it over to Jim, I have extensive knowledge about that. I'll say Steve Arts did set up a meeting with the owners of the American Hotel. Um, I didn't, I didn't take any sign from that meeting that they were gonna change their ways and we haven't seen anything there. So we, we haven't uh, we haven't gotten much uh traction. And I I'm not blaming the COVID, but it's, we're just not able to have in-person meetings with a lot of people and try and move this whole thing forward. And last, before I turn it over, I'll suggest that some of the legislation that was proposed um, through uh State Bill uh twenty-two seventeen is is gonna be disadvantageous to places like, like this corridor for us. We're gonna have to find creative ways around it because it takes away a lot of our proactive uh initiative from the officers on the street. So saying that, um, I'll let Jim talk about his crossroads project and some of the other things we're doing there.
Yeah, so uh, as as many of you recall, we, we worked on the licensing program that involved uh, a formula that we, that we use that determines that the, the number of calls per service by the number of rooms that are available. We find a ratio and those with really high numbers would have to uh hit a different level of licensing. Uh, it could be more expensive or 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 could require um, more resources to to deal with those particular hotels. Of our nine hotels in the city, they, they vary, they, they break up into three groups of three very, very smoothly. We have three that are very high, three that are average, and three that are pretty low. So it's, it's working out a formula and working with those um hotels to explain it to them. And as the chief said, our ability to contact and work out things hotels to explain it to them. And as the chief said, our ability to contact and work out things and, and talk to them has been limited. But I think that's the direction we were looking at for the, for the licensing program.
Yeah. Thanks, Jim. And then Ken is working on the extended stay lodging ordinance. And we brought this in front of council and got some direction and, and again, COVID has, has slowed that down a little bit because we're, the direction was to reach out to the hotel industry. And I think Ken has made some initial attempts, but I don't know if we got much response.
Yeah, we reached out to the, the hotel industry to get comments on kind of a framework of what an ordinance would look like. We only got feedback from one of the kind of umbrella hotel groups that, that do a lot of business in the Denver metro area. But you know, the notion of that ordinance is that, you know, we have a number of, of hotels that are probably operating with an extended stay lodging model, but aren't necessarily well set up to, to serve their population in that manner effectively. So the idea is to create a regulatory environment that distinguishes between regular hotels and extended stay lodging hotels. And set really a different standard for those extended stay facilities so that they meet some of those basic needs that someone has if they're in an extended stay lodging option. Fully cognizant of the fact that if we do that, you know, that's going to have impacts on existing hotel operators in the city. And perhaps even more importantly, is going to have impacts on some of the people that are occupying those hotels. So lots of, you know, tricky issues to work through in that regard, but that's the overall intent and idea behind that potential ordinance.
Thanks, Ken. The next strategy is market sites to the development community. And that, this is really an ongoing strategy that we, we work on daily. We've recently completed a marketing perspectives for the, the entire Ridge Ward Station area. That is in an opportunity zone and that's really our largest area that is ripe for redevelopment. And so we are promoting that and, and trying to get some interest in that area. You know, we, we work with landowners and developers as they come to the city to identify different properties. We just don't have many large parcels left anymore. But you know, we, we do attend the international conference shopping centers, conference out in Vegas, some, almost annually, and it was canceled this year. But, and meet with different developers and promote our different sites. The next goal under this is provide support to existing commercial areas and this one is assigned to city council. This has finalized the design of 38th Avenue Streetscape. The, the last action that we took on this was we completed the Create Year Eight 38th Avenue public outreach process. And came up with some proposed designs, but city council has not acted on that at this point. The next strategy is provide funding for business area marketing and organize support. Again, this is an ongoing strategy and I think we do quite a bit of this and this comes to council quite often and, and/or the Urban Renewal Authority. We have our S-Step Program, our BDZ Program. The Urban Renewal Authority uses TIF for different programs. We've started the tax increment finance clocks on all of our urban renewal areas. So incremental property taxes is being generated. And being deposited into the Urban Renewal Authority's funds. So they have additional money to do additional projects in our business corridors. So we're really starting to see the Urban Renewal Authority areas be fruitful for the city. The next strategy is maintain and expand, expand commercial grant loan programs. This we show as ongoing. This is kind of a local work city council decision based on how much city council approves in the budget. As you know, we give about $90,000 a year to the Wheat Ridge Business District, which they provide grants to local businesses. And they've, they've come in over the last couple of years and asked for additional funds. Specifically after the hailstorm, they came and city council did award them additional funds to help businesses rebuild. And so that's, that's an ongoing program where we continue to find, provide funds. Goal three under this topic is proactively identify emerging redevelopment areas. This, as I mentioned before, in the first strategy is create a plan identifying mid and long-term redevelopment sites. And really the biggest work that we put into this again was with the Wheat Ridge Ward Station area. I think that's our biggest area that is ripe for long-term redevelopment in the city. Of course, Clear Creek Crossing, we've been working on that very hard over the last few years to keep that project moving and then working with the owner of Apple Shopping Center to keep that shopping center vibrant. And then as Ken mentions, we've been working for a couple of years now with a developer on the 44th and Kipling project. And there's been quite a few smaller infill sites, 38th Avenue. We've, we have numerous projects in the works right now along 38th Avenue. So this is really an ongoing strategy that we work on daily. Goal number four under this was become a leader in technology technological infrastructure. The strategy was to take a ballot question to voters, allowing the city to create broadband utility. And this was completed in 2018. We took a question to the voters, state statute allows us cities to do this and to opt out of state stat, or a certain statute that says a local municipality cannot start its own broadband utility. So it was, it was approved overwhelmingly, 81% I think of citizens voted for it. So we have that ability. We're not starting a broadband utility, but if, if we ever saw that need in our community to provide better broadband service to our residents or businesses. And maybe we work with a private agency to do that. We have that ability to do that now. And then a couple of items that were not really associated with any goals under this topic are assess internet sales tax leakage. Ally?
Yeah, thank you, Patrick. And this, this is ongoing. As you know, last year, House Bill 19-1240 passed, which established an economic nexus for retailers that did not have a brick and mortar facility in the state. And as a result of the Wayfair decision that I'm sure you've all heard, heard about in South Dakota. And so because of that Wayfair's decision and then the, the, the law, the passage of the law last year, we're seeing a huge increase in both internet retailers licensing with the city of Wheat Ridge. And then of course, remittance of internet, of online sales taxes. So for example, you know, between the pandemic and the new law, one retailer in particular was up 67% January through April this year over the same period last year. So Colorado presents unique challenges in this, in this situation because of home, because so many home, I think over 300 home municipalities collect their own sales tax. It's very cumbersome and very difficult for national retailers. So there's a big effort underway with the state, partnership with the state to simplify sales tax collection. And there was some confusing headlines about that earlier this year during COVID, during the budget cuts for the state, which have since passed that they'd be pulling back. That's not, that's not all true. A lot of it is funded this year to move forward with the sales tax simplification. So Wheat Ridge is waiting to see how that goes with the state before we move forward with that. But we're making big strides in this. We're continuing to see, as you can see in the update here, about 30% year-over-year increase in what we call outside business licenses, business licenses outside of the city that are then delivering sales internally. So we still have work to do here to really identify top retailers that are still not yet remitting sales tax to us likely because of the simplification issue. And we'll continue to do this work.
Great. Thanks, Ally. And then I think this is the last item under this vision topic is educate the community on urban renewal, tax increment financing and enhanced sales tax incentive program. As I mentioned earlier before, we've been doing more and more of those over the years. And even this council has had several in front of them. I think the most recent was Grammy's Goodies. Next, I think that our next study session, we're bringing an S-Step application from Applejack Liquor. So the more we're doing, I think the more the community is hearing about them and educating. We have a good urban renewal board, very active. We, we try to sign and market all of our different urban renewal sites to let the citizens know that urban renewal dollars are helping revitalize those areas of the city. And so this is really an ongoing effort for sure. And we're using, using the tool quite often at this point. So I think that's it for topic, vision topic four. Any questions on that? Wheat Ridge has a choice of economically viable commercial areas.
This is, this is council member Haltine. I have a question.
Please continue.
Thank you. And so Patrick, on strategy 4.2.1 regarding the finalization of 38th Avenue Streetscape. And you mentioned it's, it's in city council's lap. And I'm just curious what like, what the status is and what the next action would be to move that forward.
I believe the last actually action that we took on it, on that issue was we brought it back to city council after the Create Year 38 process and reported out on, on the results and the recommendations. And there was no, there wasn't a consensus at the point with that council. That was a couple of years ago now to move forward. So it hasn't been brought back up as a, it is in your top five priority. But I haven't received direction to bring it back as an issue. So it would have to be brought back and, and brought back as an issue for city council to discuss again to get some direction.
So a possible next step would be to bring it back, the study session for the status and discuss what next steps would be for it?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Good to know. Thank you. That was all I had.
Mr. Goff, just as a follow-up on that, have we identified any funding resources that might be applied to that project?
You know, not today. You know, when we were, when we did our last bond issuance and sales tax increase, we, there was some thought about including 38th Avenue in, in that ballot question, but sorry, I'm blinded by the sun. I, I think there was a lot of concern that since the project was somewhat contentious that we, we did not want to mix that up with all the other projects and, and so we didn't. So it depends on how much you want to do. If you want to do the full project, which I think we were estimating was nine to 10 million at that point several years ago. I don't know what it'd be today. We would probably have to do a new bond issuance as similar to what we did for these four projects. And maybe that could be a, one of the next projects we do.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Hobbie, I have a question, please?
Please continue, Ms. Hobbie.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Patrick, we, I mean, we did, we did go under contract with, with a design consultant to get 30% plans for the green. And we did have money in our budget for the last couple of years to work on doing something with the green. And we've also worked with Darston County School District and, you know, working through, working through the, you know, 99 year lease or whatever that is. So but then that, as I understand that, that money is for the green has been identified as something that will be cut from our budget pending how, how bad the, how bad the retail sales tax are down for this year due to the pandemic. So can you just kind of clarify that a little bit for me and, and clean that, clean that up a little bit for me?
Sure. No, and I, I was just emailing with the, the design firm today. Yeah. So that project was identified to those appropriations dollars to be frozen until we have a better idea of what our revenues are going to look like this year. It was about nine, it was $900,000 we had set aside in the open space budget. But we are, we are under contracts. Before COVID hit, we were, we went under a contract with a design firm to do 30% designs as we got direction to do. And when COVID hit, we put those on hold a little bit because the, the first, first steps are to reach out to the community and the school district and, and have meetings and focus groups and look at designs. And so we waited a bit. Arcatara is the design group that we hired. They, they've had some recent success on another project doing virtual focus group meetings. So we're going to have a meeting next week to talk about how we could continue moving forward, at least to get 30% designs done.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to vision topic five. Almost there guys, getting close. Some of these are short at the ends here. Vision topic five is Wheat Ridge has diverse transportation. The first goal is improve and identify areas of need for public transportation. And Ken has the first strategy.
Thanks, Patrick. Yeah, we, you know, work and meet actively with RTD to see, you know, ways that we can frankly, at this point, just maintain, but also enhance our multimodal service in the city. I think a big reason for some of the, the 2E approved projects up at the Ward Station, which are being actively designed right now is to really leverage the ability of people to get to that station in the surrounding, you know, quarter and a half mile area. So, you know, we think the street improvements, the bike pad improvements over the tracks are going to really augment the ability of Wheat Ridge citizens to be able to get to that station and businesses. So that's ongoing. Really trying to maintain access and multimodal access out of Clear Creek Crossing. I think probably many of you are aware, but RTD has been hit pretty hard with COVID-related revenue cuts. They've been made somewhat whole by some of the CARES Act funding, but they're still, you know, they've had their cut services back in May, in, in part based on the driver shortage. And then now based on revenue impacts, but it's something that we work on very actively with RTD in terms of maintaining that level of, of transit service in the community.
Great. Thanks, Ken. Looks like all these are yours. Our next goal is implement top three priorities of the bicycle pedestrian plan. And the first strategy is to finalize the bike pad master plan and the ADA plan. And that was done in 2017, actually. Both plans, the bike pad master plan and ADA plan were both completed and approved by previous city councils. The next one is approve pedestrian mobility on 29th Avenue. Ken?
Yeah, much of that work has been done with the cities project that, that wrapped up just a few months ago. Really the last phase of that will be built as part of the private townhome development that you probably have all seen going up along the south side of 29th. It within Edgewater, but that will really fill out that system in terms of adding the additional sidewalks on that side of the street. So great improvements. It's not, it's not the, it's not fully, fully finished in terms of there's still some, some portions that are lacking as you get further west towards City Hall, but it's a good step in the right direction.
Then the last item under this goal was to determine the feasibility of building sidewalks on Wadsworth between 32nd and 35th. And staff looked at this back in 2018, put some costs to it. And it was estimated at that time to be around a million dollars. It's, it's fairly complicated. There's, there's a Rocky Mountain ditch that runs through there and it's, it's not just a a straight path for putting a sidewalk in. So we, we got direction on that, or we didn't get direction on that. We, we determined how much it would cost, but haven't gotten further direction if that's a priority for city council. Ally, next page. Vision topics five still. Goal three, increase connectivity to surrounding communities and local gathering centers. And this is fairly similar to the last one Ken talked about, but anything different, Ken, you want to add to this?
Yeah. The only thing I doubt is just that we, you know, we've been really working closely with Arvada, city of Arvada to get, you know, stronger pedestrian and bike connections up in the Ward TOD area because several of the properties up in that neck of the woods are in Arvada's jurisdiction. So we've got a good partnership there. And in fact, you know, Arvada is participating or will be participating in the costs of some of the street upgrades on 52nd Avenue and Ridge Road, you know, acknowledging that a lot of their existing and future residents will, will benefit from those facilities. Both getting over to the, was it Drake, the, the school and also to the station.
And then a goal four is to maintain the level of existing RTD routes. And Ken, Ken just spoke to that and we've been struggling honestly. And we lobby them heavily and this is really an ongoing. And unfortunately they, they have cut some routes in Wheat Ridge. And unfortunately they, they have cut, um, some routes in Wheat Ridge. And, um, we're still trying to find a, um, a bus transfer station for them, a location for that that used to be out in front of Walmart. Um, they're temporarily up at the park and ride at I seventy and Ward. Um, but they are looking for a, a new location where, um, there was a three or four bus lines, um. Come together, um, on this side of town, but, um. So a lot of that is based on revenues that RT does or doesn't have and drivers they do or don't have. Um, so we're, we're, we struggle, um, with RTD a little bit on that. Um, goal five is increase multimodal access to G line stations, um, identify and prioritize connectivity options to the G line. Um, Ken kind of mentioned that a little bit, but I think we have something else, Ken, you may want to talk to. On that one.
You may need to coach me on what that is, but, uh, they, they were, they did in fact, set up a new, a circulator route that went up into Arvada. Uh, went through our, uh, Ward Road Station area, uh, came down through the Clear Creek Crossing Development. Made its way through Denver West, uh, and then down to the Colorado Mills. So kind of an interesting route to connect different. Uh, commercial centers. They cut that route, um, back in May. So they, they first cut it. It's, um. It's northern route up into Arvada and then they completely, at least temporarily eliminated it. So. We think it's got a lot of potential for ridership, um, and for a lot of benefit for, um. Getting people to the, the, to the G line and impact onto the W line as well. But it's currently not in service. We hope that certainly will change, uh, as we, you know, emerge out of, uh, the COVID situation.
And of course, the other items on there too are, are the, um, pedestrian multimodal options on, on the street. Infrastructure that we're reconstructing up at the Wheat Ridge Ward Station on fifty second Avenue. We're adding, um, sidewalks and bike lanes and. Um, you know, we, and the pedestrian bridge over the tracks, um, will add a, um. A new option for pedestrians to get to the south side, um, of, of the station. And, you know, at some point we would love to be able to connect the station, um, down to the Clear Creek Trail, um, which would require. We've been looking at several different grants to, um, put a, a bike pedestrian bridge over, is it the Tabor Bridge over I seventy, Ken? Um, and, um, that would be the best route down to Clear Creek Crossing. So, um, those are all items that we've been looking at there. Ally, was there one more item? I think, yep.
There's, uh, two more, actually.
Two more after this? Okay, that's a big one. They're all Kins too. Uh, implement a circular bus, uh, service between the G line, commercial, uh, centers and the seniors resource center. Um, I, I think I spoke to this a little bit. This was, uh. Um, you know, we're, we're working with RTD to relocate their bus transfer station. Um, somewhere within the Clear Creek Crossing project because there'll, there'll be a lot of ridership out there with the hospital and apartments. Um, and, uh, that, that new route though, um, as Ken mentioned, uh, at this point has been temporarily. Um, suspended. So, um, I think we're going to have to see what happens after. After COVID and after what RTD, if they can come back from this. And one more item, is this the last one? Um, yeah, multimodal improvements to fifty second Avenue, Tabor Ridge Street, Tabor and Ridge Streets. Yeah, this, this is all being, well, Ken, do you want to, oh, no, this was done. Discuss how to finance the drainage. Okay. The strategy was fi- finding the finance, the, the money for it and, and we did that. We. We got a temporary sales tax increase approved and issued bonds and that's helping us, um. Build that infrastructure up at the, the TOD site. So I think that's it for topic six, which is Wheat Ridge has diverse transportation. Any questions?
Topic five.
Wait, this is council member Hulteen. I have a question.
Uh, continue, Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you. Um, does anyone know on the, uh, the sidewalk feasibility and cost estimation for, um. On Wadsworth, if that was for sidewalks on both sides of Wadsworth or if it was, uh, looking at just one side?
Just the west side.
Just the west side, okay.
Yeah, the east side would probably cost even more because I don't think there's room. Um, there's not the right away. So we'd have to buy those. Buy those houses, some of those properties. And we actually looked at buying some of those houses years ago because they, they've always been for sale. I think this might be for sale today. Um, and, um, we didn't think it was, um, worth, worth the value at that time. So. We didn't move forward. So just the west side is the million dollars.
Yeah, thank you.
Do, Patrick, have a little bit of an update on that. Um, Dr. Cog, Denver Regional Council of Governments recently initiated or. Announced a notice of funding availability for, it's not a huge spot of money, but, uh. Of money that's intended for multimodal, uh, bike pad improvements on major arterials across the metro area. Uh, and we're exploring, uh, two potential projects that we, we may submit. Uh, the funding, uh, has to be spent. It's, it's several years out, so. Uh, we don't necessarily have to come up with our local match, you know, this year, next year. We could push that out a couple of years. Uh, when budget might be more freed up, but we're going to explore that Wadsworth, uh, thirty second to thirty fifth as an option. And then we're also looking at potentially partnering with C dot as they reconstruct the. Overpass at thirty second and I seventy and rebuild that whole area as to whether we could kind of get the cities. Optimal bike pad improvements under that facility because that's a very heavily used, particularly bike route. So those are the two projects that we're going to, uh, pursue, um, submitting to Dr. Cog for that funding.
Ken, I have a question for you on that. What is the, um, what would the city's match be for those funds if we went for them? What percentage?
I think it's the standard, uh, twenty percent local match and I, I don't think it's, uh, I don't think we, I don't know yet if there's any kind of advantage. In terms of the scoring is if you overmatch. I don't think there is. I, I, I don't think they've, uh, they've formalized a, a. A priority for overmatch. So I think we'd be looking at twenty percent.
The seniors resource center over, over the last number of years has been a transportation provider for senior transportation. And I understand that another organization has picked up their, um, their performance and their duties in that. Do you know if that will impact, um, those services, uh, to our local citizens?
My understanding is no, um, they're going to be providing the same services. It's going to be, um, they're using the same buses, um, that they currently have. And the same drivers so that, um, our citizens will be, um, used to that and they're eventually going to, I think, phase those out and, and they'll. Switch over to their new company, but, um, senior resource center is just contracting those services out. So they're still going to be providing what they. My understanding is what they were providing, but they're just going to do it through a contract instead.
Thank you.
Um, our next topic is Wheat Ridge is committed to environmental stewardship. And, um, this was really all about creating an environmental sustainability committee and, and, um, if Mary Ann's on, if you have anything to say, otherwise. Um, these, um, strategies were all completed back in two thousand eighteen and you've heard from this group numerous times and. And, um, very proud of this group. They're doing, they're doing a lot and, um, Mary Ann's, uh, doing a great job and we've. Hired a part-time sustainability coordinator, Kayla, and right before COVID. Um, and, uh, so. Any questions on, on this, uh, vision topic? Not moving on, vision topic seven is Wheat Ridge residents are proud of their hometown. Um, this was kind of a new addition to, to our vision statement, um, over the last couple of years. And, um, the strategies that we have are, um, first one is to create a public survey that captures the quality of resident life. Specifically in terms of live, work, play metrics. Um, we do a survey every other year, my annual survey. And, um, we, we rate those, um, qualities, um, of resident life in our community. Um, unfortunately, we did put, um, this year's on hold. We just didn't think it was the best time to be surveying our residents, um, during the middle of this pandemic. So, um, we're going to bring that back at the end of the year to council to discuss if, um, if we're ready to bring it back, maybe next spring or even this fall. Um, so we'll bring that back as soon as we can. Uh, the next item is goal is create five additional opportunities for meaningful citizen engagement. Ally.
Yeah, and that's really, um, a cross-functional, um. Goal and something that so many of us across the city are all working on together with many of you. Um, and of course, as there's a new, a number of opportunities for folks to get involved, um, including the sustainability committee. The dirt task force, the outside agency contribution committee, which of course you heard from tonight. Um, and we've launched, you know, we, we have the census complete count committee. We've launched now Wheat Ridge Speaks and WhatsApp Wheat Ridge. So that we're sort of covering the virtual side of that as well. And I would, um, also just take this opportunity to say what. Great participation we've seen in council meetings as well, since we've, um, taken them virtual.
Great. Thanks, Ally. Uh, goal three is to increase public participation by twenty percent in all citywide meetings. Um, we are working on creating a, as, or revamping a city one-on-one, uh, course for residents. Um, Mary Ann, you on, you want to speak to that?
Sure. Uh, yes, I've been working with local works to develop a Wheat Ridge one-on-one course, which will include both. Um, letting know how the city works and why that's important and then also, uh, guiding with strategies, um, for public and effective public engagement. Uh, we anticipate this will be about six to eight weeks. It'll take place in the fall. We still have some stuff to figure out, but we're really excited about this program.
Great, thank you. And, uh, X, X, let's see, assess current levels of public participation and the needs of residents. Ally.
Yeah, and I would say that this is still, uh, very much ongoing. Um, we, we, we look at metrics of our website and also social media. And we see at least ten percent growth year over year in, in both of those metrics in terms of, um, you know, additional, um, growth in that. Audience. Um, we've, uh, had a, a lot of great attendance, um, the NRS. Um, which again, so many of you are involved in, 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 um, um, really meaningful ways. That was a, the NRS was a huge project and saw a lot of community engagement, as did the Wadsworth Improvement Project. Lots of great turnout of those, at those meetings. Um, so we continue to learn more about our residents, um. Needs and desires to, to, to be involved and we, um, are continuing to expand our ways to, to reach out.
Thank you, Ally. Um, the next strategy that's really not associated with the goal is to create a charter commission to update the city charter. Um, haven't taken any action on that at this point. Um, and then create a recognition campaign for home, hometown pride. And, um, I think our fiftieth anniversary was, was kind of our, our biggest effort this last year. Ally, want to summarize that?
Yeah, that was a year-long effort last year. We, we had a gala, um, a number of different events. We sort of branded everything the fiftieth. And really drew attention to the fact that Wheat Ridge had a birthday with an O. Um, and then throughout that same year, we, um. We also celebrated the opening of the G line, um, and branded materials and had a lot of fun with that. Um, and sort of took that theme, theme also through the boards and commissions dinner. So I think it was a really, really fun year. Thank goodness. It wasn't the year of the pandemic. Um, because that really would have changed things. And I think those had a really good time celebrating Wheat Ridge last year.
Okay, next page. Okay, on to our last vision topic. Almost done, guys. Uh, last vision topic is Wheat Ridge residents. Enjoy an active, healthy lifestyle. And, um, our first goal is to increase young family participation. In city-sponsored recreation programs. Um, Karen, you still on?
Yes, I am. Uh, I just start by saying that this is ongoing and I know. I've spoken to a couple of city council members who are very passionate about family programming and teen programming and I know how important it is and, um. We certainly recognize that there's a, a gap there and continue to offer programs that appeal to youth, teens and families. Um, and just recognizing that many times we offer, um, programs and they're canceled due to low enrollment. So trying to kind of figure that out is an ongoing challenge. I think some of the new online, uh, feedback opportunities that Ally just spoke about. Could be potentially helpful to gain some insight. Um, also, if we do implement, uh, youth commission or council. Which were, which was something that was brought up by Councilman Urban and Councilwoman Hutchinson, and that might help to inform the process as well. Um, and then just one other piece that's related is the renovation of the Anderson Building did provide some additional drop-in recreation opportunities. Um, pre-COVID. Um, but those are kind of on a hiatus at the moment.
Great, thanks Karen. And our next, second goal is develop an active relationship with, uh, Lutheran Medical Center. And, um, promote health, active, healthy lifestyles.
Sure. So, um, myself and Susan Anderson, our recreation manager, met with Lutheran staff in. November of last year to brainstorm some ideas, um, one of which was to connect individuals that were completing like a physical rehab program. Through Lutheran with, um, a strength and conditioning coach at the recreation center, just as, um, a transition. Program that could then introduce those individuals to our rec center and hopefully they would continue utilizing and become members. Um, so that's still in the works, just an idea at this point. Um, Lutheran is heavily involved in the Heal Committee. Which is healthy eating, active living, as our city staff. And, um, together the Heal Committee, uh, facilitates quarterly programming. Additionally, Lutheran staff, they host a Healthy You Program, a series of educational programs at the Active Adult Center. And then of course, the mayor and city manager meet with the CEO quarterly to discuss, um, partnership opportunities.
Great. And I think our last item, um, is not associated with the goal, but it was update, um, plans and investigate funding. For ballot initiative, expanding the recreation center. Um, the recreation center expansion was, um, a, a project that was. Part of the Dirt Task Force and it wasn't prioritized, uh, by our citizen committee at that point to, um, include it in the. In the sales tax increase ballot question. Um, it wasn't at that point. So I think if, if we ever look at doing another bond initiative. Um, we'll see if this project, um, rises to the level of priority for the community. Um, a lot is. Lot is changing over this last year on, um, on recreation and services and how people are going to recreate in the future. So, um, we're not sure if, uh, expansion will be needed. I don't know. Um, things may have changed, but at this point, um, there's no funding for the expansion. Of the rec center. And I think that's the last page. So any questions on vision topic eight?
Or any, or any vision topic.
Or any vision topic.
Any vision topic. So general discussion then on the, um. Uh, Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you. Um, I have a question that actually goes back, um, to, uh, it's pretty impressive when you have an entire vision topic. That's been completed in one year. So the, uh, the Wheat Ridge is committed to environmental stewardship, vision topic six. And I'm curious, since we've hired, um, a part-time coordinator to fulfill that. If it would be appropriate, um, to actually identify some, some strategies and goals around that. I know that there's. A really comprehensive document that the Wheat Ridge, Sustainable Wheat Ridge Group has put together. Um, and I know that they're operating off of that, but I don't know if we have any type of mandate on like where that rubber hits the road. I know we've got the, um. Sustainable Neighborhoods Program rolling out this week, or this year, not this week. Um, so I'm just sort of curious, like, what would be the process to identify a couple of priorities around that? Or do we really need to wait till we have our retreat in February?
Well, um, you know, a couple of different things and Mary Ann, jump in, um, if you'd like, but. Yeah, I think, I think the committee has a, a list of priorities that probably for the next several years that, um, they would recommend moving forward. With next, I think the neighborhood, um, what, what's it called again? The neighborhood.
Sustainability.
Yeah, I think with Kayla just being part-time, I think that's going to probably take, um, all of her time to get that program up and going. So I don't know, sure. I'm not sure what the capacity is to do anything else right now, but Mary Ann, what, what do you say?
I think it's a great question. I think that one of the things that we're also going to be ta- tasking Kayla with is revamping an internal sustainability committee. For some internal initiatives as well and something that we think she could share the load on, um, for external programs. That's something that the committee would be happy to come together. We could bring it at the budget during the budget presentation. Or it's something that we could come to council in the future and see if that would be something that they would be interested in.
And I think we do, Ally, we have them scheduled, um, sometime in August, I think.
August seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
And present, present their, uh, budget requests. So, um, Ms. Hulteen, I think that would be a good, good time to. If you're, if you don't like, if you don't like what you hear on what their priorities are, maybe suggest if you want to give them money, it's like, hey, I think, you know. Maybe this is something you should do instead.
I might, I, I'm not necessarily, uh, proposing that we change the scope of what's being worked on, but rather just make sure it's being reflected. In this document since, um, you know, it makes like, it makes it look like we're done with sustainability when in fact they're really just launched kind of the, the next exciting part. So I just want to make sure that that's part of what we're talking about and we're not losing track of it. Thanks.
More questions? Uh, Ms. Hoppy.
Um, I don't have any questions, but I just want to say thank you to all of our department heads for being here to give us updates and, um, I, um. I was, uh, one of the counselors that was there to, um. I I was one of the counselors that was there to, you know, work on these goals and. Strategies, and it's really awesome to see them on on paper and to see all of the work that's gone into them, so I just want to say thank you very much to. For our department heads and and to their staff for keeping us moving forward down the road.
And Mr. Mayor, we, just as a reminder, we sent out a meeting invite for you all, but we have rescheduled our retreat for February nineteenth and twentieth. So ways out still, but we do have that on the calendar, we have our facilitator books, and so hopefully we'll. Be through some of these issues where we can all get together in February.
Hopefully so.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Urban, did I see your hand there? Gotcha, any other questions for Mr. Goff or his staff, we've got a full complement of staff, I'd like to. I noticed that Judge Randall is with us, Judge, thank you very much for joining us. Also, we also have in the package the the work reports for all of our, for all of our departments that I'm sure you've all looked through and. And great work for for all of the departments and a very good summary of all the work that's been going on, so. Congratulations and thank you for all of that.
Yeah, if anything comes up after tonight, if you have questions, please go ahead and reach out to the directors directly, and and if there's just something follow-up. And there was a lot of information there, we get it, we're gonna go over all those accomplishments and work plans tonight, but please reach out if you have questions.
Thank you. Any other, any other conversation on Agenda Item Number Two? Okay, yo, Ms. Weaver, thank you.
I have said this before, but I did go to the dog walking. Community Safety Class, and it was fantastic, and I just want to give kudos that. When we can do those classes again, they're just really fantastic, and. And my dog Ava got a certificate, so it's it's just a really fun thing, so. And I also just want to say, I'm I'm just sort of sitting here in awe of all the things that have been completed. I just feel extremely lucky in that you all. Working at the city make our jobs a lot easier, because things just happen, and. I just wanted to thank everyone, it's it's really amazing to hear all of these things and say, oh, yeah, we did that, and we did that, and we did that, and we're working on this, and. It's incredible, so thank you all, I know this is, it it was a long report to get through, but I don't think it's falling on any. It's all being recognized, so thank you all.
Any additional conversations, questions, comments? Well, thank you, Mr. Goff, for taking us through that, thank you all, director heads and and the participants in in making a great presentation on that. Great work you've been doing, a lot of nice planning coming up, so we look forward to working through a lot of these issues with you. We will, we will now go to staff reports, and I'll go to Mr. Goff again, you've you've sort of got the night sewed up.
Yeah, I think I've talked enough, so I'll leave it at that, just as I I did briefly mention earlier, we're. Got a hint of what June revenues look like, and 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 we're all surprised that how good they were, so. Just want to dig into it a little bit to make sure before we release it too much to the public that it's true, so hopefully good news that at least June. Was a lot better than we expected, so we'll we'll, in the next week or two, we should get some hard numbers out to you.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll go to item number four for elected officials reports, if you have something you'd like to contribute, please raise your hand. And Ms. Nosler Beck?
Thanks, Mayor, I had to pop out of the meeting, because I had a neighbor who. Had tripped and fallen out on their driveway, and I just wanted to give an incredible shout-out to my neighbors. Who didn't have a cellphone on them as they were walking by and stopped by my house and. Asked me to dial nine-one-one, and I want to say thank you to the first responders, but also to the call center. We had an ambulance and police officers and West Metro Fire here within, I think it was six minutes. And my neighbor's doing better, he doesn't have to go to the hospital, and all of my neighborhood came out, and it was just a really, it's just a really. Great time to come together for our neighbor, and boy, I sure do love living in Wheat Ridge, thank you all.
Thank you. Good story, results, best wishes to your neighbor, any, anything else from counselors, Mr. Urban?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, sort of related to the Business Stabilization Program, the Paycheck Protection Program released data. Relative to the applicants that received funding, and within the city of Wheat Ridge, we had nine hundred and forty-six businesses apply for the PPP. And a hundred and forty of those received funds of less than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That particular group received about thirty million dollars in funds, and an additional eight hundred and six businesses, oh, sorry. Eight hundred and six businesses received a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or less, a hundred and forty businesses received a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more. And so the estimated receipts by Wheat Ridge businesses, businesses from the PPP is between sixty-nine million dollars. And a hundred and thirty-one million dollars, and that was able to. Preserve approximately eight thousand six hundred and sixty-one jobs, so just wanted to provide that information to you.
Thank you very much. Additional, Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mayor, I want to thank everybody for the presentations tonight, hard work, and also, I would like to thank. The Wang Developer, who has the property next to Christopher House, finally, the weeds have been cut, they were to my shoulders. And now what is left is just some trash, so if that could get picked up, you know, it would make Thirty-Eighth Avenue look a little better. Thank you.
I saw Mr. Lorenz nod on his head, so I think he's.
Okay, we'll go to Ms. Hulteen.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to give a shout-out to Karen O'Donnell and her crew, I spent. A couple shifts in the last week hanging out with Parks and Rec staff in our parks, doing outreach on behalf of Take the Census. And we've reached a lot of community members, it's really great that our city is actually going into the parks and are reaching. Our community members, you know, in places where we can have conversations with them, and we have great little giveaways, and the kids get to play. A beanbag game, but really what made it spectacular was Karen's staff, were just really great with the community, and I had a lot of fun, so. I believe the city still has a lot of yard signs available, so I encourage. All of my peers to get one in their yard if you can, and if you have any neighbors who you think might be willing to put out a sign. It's a great time to be reaching people while they're out walking, and and let's all make sure we get the census done this year, but. I just want to thank city staff, it's been really fun to do that, and hopefully another round in August, and I'm happy to volunteer again, thanks.
Additional sharing that from council? Well, we're, Ms. Hutchinson?
Just one other thing. July fourth was the loudest July fourth I've ever experienced in Wheat Ridge, it was bizarre. But then the day after, there were only two fireworks that I heard, and thank goodness. Because we're used to quiet, and fireworks are illegal, so. I'm just interested in, if they're illegal, how come they're able to be purchased?
They go to Wyoming?
Is that right, you know, on KOSI radio station, there was actually an ad on there for people to be able to buy fireworks. Just thought that was kind of interesting.
Yeah, it was, it was a phenomenon across the whole country, and I I think, you know, it's 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 a reaction to COVID still, and. Hopefully, it slows down here now that the force over.
Okay, any other, any other comments from council? Elected officials reports, Mr. Miller, I see you're on the line, I don't want to skip you over, if you've got anything, we're happy to have you, thank you for joining us.
No, Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything for tonight, thank you to the staff for the presentation, though.
Thank you very much, all right, any other, any other further business to come to our study session tonight? Well, I want to thank you all for joining us, I want to thank Christine Disney and Cheryl Brungard for bringing us the outside agency recommendations. Mr. Goff showed up with his full complement of staff, Ms. Schilling is here, Karen O'Donnell, Ken Johnstone, Chief Murtha, Division Chief Jim Lorenz. Greg Knutson and Chris Randall, thank you all for joining us, we appreciate your participation in our meetings, and thank you for the good work that you and your. Your teams do for our city, and we appreciate that. We, I want to make a little announcement, that Coffee with the Mayor is on for a virtual format, Zoom format. This Saturday morning at nine o'clock. You can sign up for that, and we look forward to having you join that meeting for about an hour, so I hope you'll be able to join us. We, I believe our city is doing great efforts to combat the COVID nineteen pandemic. You know, I appreciate all of the, all of the concerns that I hear from citizens, and their their really willingness to. Gather together and fight this common enemy, so all I can do is to urge you to wash your hands and social distance and wear masks. When you're in enclosed places, and really appreciate your neighbors and your health and their health, and I think with all of that, we will, we will. Stay safe and come out of this stronger than before, so that will conclude our meeting for the night, thank you very much. We have a full council meeting one week from tonight at seven o'clock, virtual, virtual, or. In City Hall, if you would like to make those arrangements, so anyway, have a nice week, be careful and stay safe, good night, everyone.